We look forward to the next four years. Dr. Bryan comes to us well-trained and well-prepared, and we're looking forward to four truly successful years under his leadership. And I'd now like to ask Susie Thomas, Clerk of Court, to come forward. And Dr. Bryan, if you'll come forward, we'll proceed with the swearing-in ceremony.
If you'd like to listen to the Bible, raise your right. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Dr. Andrew Bryan II.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Dr. Andrew Bryan II.
Do solemnly swear that.
Do solemnly swear that.
I will be faithful.
I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the State of North Carolina.
To the State of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are, or may be.
Which are, or may be.
Established for the government thereof.
Established for the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
And that I will endeavor to support.
Maintain.
Maintain.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
Of the said state.
Of the said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge.
To the best of my knowledge.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Dr. Andrew Bryan II.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will perform faithfully.
That I will perform faithfully.
And to the best of my skill.
And to the best of my skill.
And ability.
And ability.
The duties of.
The duties of.
Superintendent of Lee County Schools.
Superintendent of Lee County Schools.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, guys.
And let me be the first to congratulate you. We look forward to your leadership. We pledge our support to make the next four years memorable in the history of our educational system. And now, if you'd like to make a few comments, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Certainly a great honor to be here today. I'm very humbled. I'd like to thank the Board for the opportunity, choosing me as Superintendent. Certainly very special and a great opportunity because, after all, this is a great county. And what makes this county a great place are the people who live here. And I'd also like to thank my family, who's here today. My wife Debbie, my son Drew, my sister Jennifer, and her daughter Ellie, and my mom, who's here today. And appreciate them being here. And I'd also like to thank the educators of Lee County. I've been fortunate to be here for seven years now, in various capacities. And our teachers are great. And they do a great job every day for our most important resource that we have here in this county, and that's our children. And I can pledge to you, Dr. Smith, that we will go to work every day and support our children so they can have a successful future. Thank you for all the support and kindness during my transition, and I look forward to working with everybody. Thank you.
And that concludes this part. The refreshments are at the back. Please help yourself and help us enjoy this memorable occasion. Thank you.
Education meeting to order. If you would, at this time, I'd like for everybody to join me in a moment of silence. At this time, please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. And at this time, the Board of Education will be reorganized for the new year. And at this point, I will accept nominations for the position of Chair.
Dr. Bryan, I'd like to nominate Dr. Lynn Smith for Chairman.
Ms. Brogan recommends Dr. Lynn Smith. Dr. Smith, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Any other nominations?
Dr. Bryan, I'd like to make a motion that we close the nomination on the one name, Dr. Lynn Smith.
Dr. Smith has made a motion to close the nominating process. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Ms. Brogan. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Motion on the floor is to make Dr. Lynn Smith our Chairman for Lee County Board of Education. All those in favor, please signify by raising their hand and saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Seven no vote. Congratulations, Dr. Smith, Chair of Lee County Board of Education. And I'll turn the gavel over to you.
And we will continue the reorganization part of this by electing a Vice Chair. Is there a nomination for Vice Chair of Lee County Board of Education?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mark Akonosho for Vice Chair.
The motion has been made. Do you accept, Mr. Akonosho?
Yes.
Are there further nominations? Hearing none. All those in favor of Mr. Akonosho to serve as Vice Chair of Lee County Board of Education, please raise your hand, please. Mrs. Britt, that looks unanimous. Mr. Akonosho, congratulations on your office of Vice Chair.
Thank you.
I certainly want to take this opportunity to thank the Board, to allow me to serve as Chairman for the coming year. As a Board, we're given the responsibility to provide an appropriate 21st century education for the students we serve. In the pursuit of that job, we must remain vigilant in our duty to advocate for the best interest of our children. They don't vote. They do not have political clout. So that duty rests squarely on the shoulders of this Board. With every budget we make, every policy we post, every employee we hire, we must be dedicated to the best interest of our students. And this truly isn't a watershed year in the history of Lee County public education, as tonight we swear in our new Superintendent, Dr. Andy Bryan. Congratulations again. Under his leadership, with total dedication from this Board, I am sure that we can look forward to another great year for the students of Lee County. We have a few visitors I'd like to recognize. Will Doran from the Sanford Herald, welcome as usual. Emily Grimes, thank you for looking after our military children. And it's always a pleasure to see staff here. I notice you don't get paid these kind of hours, but thank you for being here. And now, I'd like to share our vision. Lee County Schools, in partnership with the community, will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement our students and their positive participation in society. And I'd like to share with our code of ethics under which we, as Board members, serve. We must avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the Board. We must avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the Board. We must avoid the misuse of public funds, avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts, and avoid making confidential information public. And I would now entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Brogan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sharp. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of June the 11th and June the 20th.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes for June 11th, 2013, and June 27th, 2013.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. The minutes are approved. We can now proceed with announcements, and let's go straight to the Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. I want to touch on a few areas first. I'd like to, once again, thank everyone for coming out tonight for the swearing-in ceremony. It's great to see so many friendly faces and have the support of the community, and look forward to being Superintendent here. I'll begin by giving the Board just a brief update on the Transition Plan and First Week as Superintendent. Posted the Transition Plan on July 1, as promised, and I'd like to thank the Board for the feedback I received from everyone regarding the Transition Plan. And have acknowledged the progress we have already made for the Transition Plan. If you go into the website and in the back of the Transition Plan, you can see progress we made, what has already been completed, what's in progress, and what we need to start. So I think we've gotten off to a good start with that. Obviously, Transition Plan has a true theme to it, and that theme is our children, their future, our purpose. And I think that goes in line with Dr. Smith's comments tonight and what this Board has always promoted, the idea of we are here to ensure our students' future. And what we do is designed to support them and their success as they move forward. Five priorities in that Transition Plan are, one, listening to the community; two, fostering an effective Board Superintendent relationship; three, promoting high levels of achievement for every child; four, ensuring organizational effectiveness; and five, promoting district-wide improvement. And during the next few months, obviously, we'll be continuing to move forward as a school district, but we will be doing a lot of listening and evaluation of where we are. And at the end of that Transition Plan in October, we'll report back to the Board on what I have found and what feedback I've received from the community. And also, in line with our test scores coming back in October from the State, we'll be doing a review from a data perspective as well. So we'll be reporting back to the Board with that. A couple other things, just to let you know about in reference to the transition. I've been posting a blog on the website that hopefully everybody's had an opportunity to sort of read, and it's sort of a subject of the day, where I talk about or provide a link to something that might be of interest to education in Lee County. And also have a Twitter account, which has been very interesting and given the opportunity to communicate sort of in that live mode where people can sort of respond and provide their own thoughts to you. It's been very interesting. I've learned a great deal, and hopefully have been able to share some things of value with people as well. So please feel free to join and follow my Twitter account. I would enjoy that. Couple other things for tonight, a budget update for you. As you know, the budget picture is still very unclear. State budget is not complete yet. House and Senate conferees are still working. We were listening to a conference call with Department of Public Instruction yesterday, and the comment was made that it might be the very end of July before we have a state We do know that in the House budget, as it's proposed right now, there's a $2.5 million discretionary cut that is there that schools have to account for, and plus some other reductions. And the Senate budget also has that same for Lee County, about $2.5 million cut, except it's spread out across categories. So conferees are trying to figure out what that will eventually look like. So we will keep everyone up to date as we know information, and it's certainly something that everyone, I know particularly our Finance Office, would like to get straight and be moving forward.
But based on your comments, Dr. Bryan, either direction they go, we're looking at trying to cut 2.5 million?
That's a conservative number, yes. And add on to that, we already know from the locality that we're going to have a $500,000 cut from the Board of Commissioners. So that number is going to certainly go higher. So we're looking at some difficult cuts. On legislative front, I have four bills I'd like to talk about tonight. First one is Senate Bill 236. And that bill permits the Board of Commissioners, instead of the Board of Education, authority to assume responsibility for construction, improvement, ownership, and acquisition of public property. That bill has been transferred from the House Rules Committee to the House Government Committee, and will actually be heard in committee on Thursday, July 11, at 10:00 a.m. in Room 643. And that's in the Legislative Office Building. Lee County Representative Mike Stone is the co-chair of that committee, along with Chairman Warren, who is from Rowan County. So that will be at 10:00 a.m. on Thursday. House Bill 490 has already passed. Those of you who don't know, that's the bill that mandates partisan elections for Sanford City Council and the Board of Education. For us, certainly affects the Board election, but also affects elections that are being held within the community. September 10 has been set as a primary for municipal elections, and that will necessitate the use of the following schools as polling places. Certainly High School, Edwards Elementary, Bullock Elementary, Tranway Elementary, J.R. Ingram, Broadway Elementary, and Eastlake Middle School. Since September 10 is a regular school day for students on both traditional year-round calendars. We're going to be meeting with Nancy Kimball from the Board of Elections to ensure that we ensure the safety of our students and make sure that logistics are worked out. They have assured us that they're going to do everything they can for that. And of course, most people know that bill was passed, and Representative Stone sponsored that bill as well. House Bill 491 provides transfer of school resource officers from the Board of Education to the County Sheriff. Originally was in committee on the rules and operations in the Senate. It has since been sent to the Appropriations-Based Budget Committee. Mike Stone, Representative Stone sponsored that bill as well, and I have not, at least late this afternoon, have not heard another update on that bill and where it was. I will note that Sheriff Tracy Carter and I have had some preliminary conversations regarding if that bill does move forward and become law, about what a potential transition would look like, but we're really in the preliminary stages with that. Final bill is House Bill 512. This bill will eliminate the Lee County Board of Education from appointing trustees to the Community College Board. It's been referred to the Senate Committee on Education, Higher Education. Actually, the committee hearing for this bill will take place at 10:00 a.m. tomorrow in Room 544 of the Legislative Office Building, also sponsored by Representative Mike Stone. So that bill is moving forward. I'm sure there will be more updates as the week goes along and as we move into July, but that is the latest for the legislature. Final thing I'll talk about, which I think is the most important thing we do, Curriculum Instruction. Just want to congratulate Carol Chapo and Tina Polrock and our whole staff for their hard work, because our Math/Science Partnership Grant was renewed. And as you know, the Math/Science Partnership Grant has provided us with a great deal of support for professional development for our teachers, in particular, I mean, for our elementary and middle school teachers, and they have really risen to the task. I know Carol's doing a presentation a little bit later regarding Title I, but she might want to just drop a few hints about some of the things our teachers are doing this summer with that. Tranway Elementary School will begin on Monday, July 15, and Literally College will begin on Tuesday, August 6. And just one other thing, we have had a very positive response within our community from our parents. We have a parent-assist model where parents can go in and check grades for students, and that's been wildly successful. With everything that the State is doing and switching to a new data management system, information system called Homebase, we're also going to be shifting our parent portal as well. It actually gives parents more options and more opportunities to check on how their student is progressing. We're going to be communicating that to our schools and parents and community as the end of the summer goes along to make sure that we don't have a drop in action with that. We want to make sure our parents know how to access the new system, and we have a communication plan that actually is coming together right now to make sure everyone's informed. Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Dr. Bryan. I was remiss in introducing our guest. I noticed a Boy Scout in the audience. I assume that you're here for a merit badge. You're not just killing time because you didn't have anything else to do.
That's my son in the Boy Scout uniform, and my husband behind him.
Now I know why he's here. Is he working on a merit badge?
Yeah, there's three. The three young men right there are all working on the merit badge, yes, and they're here this evening to work on the merit badge.
I assume that's what caused your presence here, and thank you for coming. And I hope you find it deformative. Listen to your mama. Before we get into committee reports, I would like to recognize Mrs. Brogan to follow up on comments on the Legislature, as she spent a fair amount of time in the Legislature recently. If you have comments?
Sure, I do. I'd like to talk about my last two trips up to the Legislative Building. June 18, I went up for the Senate State, sorry, Senate, State, and Local Government Committee, was hearing Bill 490, which just recently passed, as Dr. Bryan said. It was in committee in the Senate. I went up and Senator Stone, I'm sorry, Representative Stone, Senator Rabin, and Kirk Smith, the County Commissioner, all spoke in favor of the bill. I was the only one there that spoke in opposition to the bill. They had a voice vote, and the bill failed committee that day. It did not pass. The following week, I found out that it was back on the agenda for the following Tuesday, for the same committee, for the Senate, State, and Local Government Committee. So I went up another time the following Tuesday. This time, Representative Stone and Senator Rabin and Commissioner Jim Walmack all spoke in favor of the bill. And Sam Gaskins from the City Council and Representative Deb McManus and I all spoke in opposition to the bill. Senator Kennard, I'm hoping I'm saying your name right. Senator Kennard proposed three amendments that day on the 25th towards the bill. The first amendment would have taken the school board out of the bill, and that failed. The second amendment would have taken the City Council out of the bill, and it failed. The third amendment was for a resolution that would allow the people of Lee County to have an option to vote, allow them to have the opportunity to vote on this bill if they really wanted the elections to be partisan for the City Council and the Board of Education. There was a voice vote on this in the committee, and the voice vote, there was the ayes and the nays, and to me, and probably most of the people in the room, it sounded like the ayes had it, but the Chairman called it for the nays. So that amendment failed. It did not pass. And then they went right into a vote, a voice vote, for the bill as a whole, and it ended up passing out of committee. And there was no ask for a show of hands on that. The following day, the Bill 490 hit the Senate floor on the 26, and Senator Kennard again tried an amendment for a resolution to allow us the opportunity to vote on this as Lee County citizens. I do want to go back and say that when that amendment came up for the resolution, Representative Stone did go on record and say he went up and said that he was against that amendment. So he was against having a resolution and letting the people vote on it. She tried again on the Senate floor, Senator Kennard, for this amendment for the resolution, and it ended up getting tabled along party lines, 32 to 17 was the final vote. And it ended up passing off the Senate floor through the Senate along party lines. So it's now officially law. I spoke in opposition to it because, in my mind, you know, this was a bad bill, and it's going to have a negative effect on our community and on our children. And that was my driving force to going up and speaking against it, because I strongly am opposed to having our Board of Education, and the City Council for that matter, partisan Board, strongly against that. And I'm strongly against it for us as a Board of Education, because education is a nonpartisan issue. Everybody in the community is going to benefit from a strong education system, whether you're Republican, Democrat, Independent, it doesn't matter. And especially the children are going to benefit from a strong system. So they need to be forefront in our minds when we're making decisions. And, you know, as a Board of Education, we make our decisions based on facts and common sense and what's best for the children. And I'm concerned that if we go into, become a partisan Board, that decisions will start to be made on party agendas and not what's best for the children. And that's not fair for our children. They deserve better than that. And they're depending on us as a Board to make decisions on their behalf for what's best for their education. So it wouldn't be fair to them. And as a parent and a Board of Education member, it's unacceptable to me to ever use our children as pawns in political agendas. To me, that's just unacceptable. That's not why I'm up here as a Board of Education member. I'm here to do what's best for the children, and I really want us to keep our focus on that. So I was very disturbed and upset about this bill, and that's why I went up and spoke against it, because I felt that there is great potential that we could get off track down the road about making our decisions as a Board, and it will get away from the children and more on political agendas. And it's just unacceptable to me that children would end up being caught up in this, and that they could be, you know, political pawns. I just don't, that's just unacceptable. So these are some of the things that I spoke when I was speaking in front of the Senate Committee. These were the highlights that I spoke and the part of my comments when I spoke to the committee. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to make one comment to tag on to Ms. Brogan. Her comments, and then based on the updates there from Dr. Bryan, about the legislation that Representative Stone has either sponsored or supported strongly, you know, it's apparent that Mr. Stone is more concerned with party control of education than he is sufficient funding of education, and that's disappointing.
Any further comments? We'll now proceed with committee reports, curriculum and instruction. Dr. Lynn Smith, please.
Mr. Chairman, the Curriculum and Instruction Committee has not met since the last Board meeting, so we have no report.
Facilities and Technology, Mr. Mardani.
We have no report. Well, Facilities and Technologies has not met.
Finance, Mr. Akonosho.
No report. I don't know if Tammy has anything to say.
Policy, Mr. Sharp.
No report. There's nothing on for first or second reading, no meeting for July, and our next meeting is scheduled for August 20.
I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. We can now proceed to new business. Is there a motion to approve the Title I-A and Title II-A applications?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the 2013-2014 CCIP Title I-A and Title II-A applications.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Dr. Chappell, would you come to the podium and bring us up to speed on what this means?
I don't know if it's working or not anyway. I will update you on the MSP before we take up Title I, Title II, that our Math Science Partnership Grant. I'm very excited about our workshops. They do start next week. We'll have four weeks of teacher workshops, and we're going to be teaching the chemistry course again this summer. It was very popular last summer. We're going to have the Chemistry I and then a follow-up with Chemistry II. A lot of the middle school teachers take this course because a lot of the chemistry is taught in the middle school, and the professor has just been great from NC State. Then we're introducing a new course this summer, and it's astronomy, and I'd like to invite all of you, I will send you an invitation to come to our sky watching session that's going to be held either Tuesday or Wednesday of next week. The instructors are from Morehead Planetarium, and they are just awesome. And they knew someone here in Lee County named Jim Elliott, who I'm not familiar with, but he evidently is a, someone, I guess you'd call him an amateur astronomer, and he has telescopes, and he's bringing his telescopes to Southernly High School next week at night. And they're going to bring some from Morehead Planetarium, and they're inviting all the families of the teachers to come and watch the sky. They said that the goal is, they hope we'll be able to see Saturn. So I'm going to take Little Will up there too, so maybe we will see Saturn, but it will be just great. And they said invite anybody that wants to come. They're also going to bring their inflatable planetarium and set it up in the media center. It's a large, I think almost like a tent, but rounded, and they said they can do almost everything in there that they do in the actual planetarium and show you the different constellations. So that'll be there two days on Wednesday and Thursday. And then on Friday, the teachers are going to Morehead Planetarium for a field trip. I thought that would, this is our last year of the grant, that would be just a great treat for them. They're going to see two shows, and then they're going to go downtown Chapel Hill and have lunch and have a little time that they can explore the campus a little bit. So we're very excited about that. That will be next week, and then it will be again the last week in July and the first week of August, so we'll have a repeat of that, and I'll let you know then about the night sky watching. So if you miss it next week, maybe you can come out the last week. Something that I'm very excited about this grant, in addition to what we're going to be offering, I received a telephone call today from Dr. Barbara Heath, and she is, does our evaluation. She's with East Main Center out of Wilmington, and she's evaluating four North Carolina MSP grants. And she called because she said she wanted to come down and visit with me on the 30th of July, that her statistician is very excited about the data that they are seeing about the results of this grant and the impact it's having. So that got me excited, and she said, you know, she wants to come down. She does write a lot of articles that are published, and if she's interested in writing an article about the effects of this grant, that would be just a huge boost for our county. So I'll let you know about that, too. Dr. Leslie Sombers, the one who's teaching the chemistry course, she applied for an award last summer that was given out last fall and from the president, and for young professors in universities, outstanding professors. And she used, in part of her application, she had to talk about outreach, so she used the work she did in Lee County as her outreach part of the grant. I mean, not grant, award. She did win the award and received enough money with the award to fund a chemistry lab at state. So I feel like, you know, we did some really good with that. So I'm excited that there's people from state, and you've seen how a lot of them are coming here and doing things in our classrooms, and I'm glad we, I feel like we're able to give back to them when we're able to help them achieve something like that. So anyway, I will get the information to you, and maybe some of you will be able to join us when we do our, and hopefully the weather will cooperate and be clear. We need a clear night, and we need it to be very, very dark where we are in order to see the sky. Title I, I was, and Title II, I was concerned about the sequestration that went into effect did cut both those budgets, but the cut wasn't quite as bad as we had, you know, had heard it might be. We thought it might be as high as 8%, but it turned out to be either 5% or less, which is still a lot of money. It does add up, but I was thankful for what we did get. The schools will not get quite as much money sent to them next year, but they will still get a nice amount. Should be able to do a good portion of the same programs that we had in the past, but we'll have to wait on the state budget before we really will make any further firm decisions on what will be done with Title I money. But I've told you in the report here, the types of things we've done in the past and the types of things that are used, that Title I money can be used for. We do think we're on the list to be monitored this year for Title I and Title II. We haven't received anything official from the state, but Glenda did take part in a committee in another school last year, and she said she thought that we're going to be monitored this year. That is a big deal with Title I and Title II because they come and it's more than an audit. They look at everything. They will spend probably two or three days here, and they will bring a lot of committees together that they will talk to, and they will go through all of the documentation for like the Beginning Teacher Program and all the work that Glenda's done with that. And then they'll look at all of our documentation and our local plans, and then they'll really talk with principals and ask them how they make their decisions on how to use their money. Once the money goes to the schools, it is a site-based decision how that money is spent, as long as it's within the parameters of how Title I money can be spent. So, you know, we are looking forward to them coming. They come about once every five years, but that will be, there'll be a lot of preparation for that, and we'll let you know more about that when we know when the visit is scheduled. So are there any questions about either one of these grant applications?
Well, Dr. Chappell, I certainly want to compliment you on your expertise and maybe more importantly, your perseverance, because I've seen those applications, and I'm not sure I can carry them around.
Right, they are.
So on behalf of our children, thank you for the time and the energy it takes to make these successfully applicant.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor of approving the 2013-2014 CCIP budget grants? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Grants are approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll now entertain a motion to approve the revised Traditional Tranway Year-Round schedule.
I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the revised 2013-2014 Traditional Tranway Year-Round in Lee Early College Calendars.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Dr. Brian, would you like to speak on this?
Looking through the calendar, it was simply a matter of we had one additional workday in all three calendars that we needed to take out, and we took those out for Lee Early College at the beginning of the school year, and Tranway and Traditional at the end, which complies with the law and our contract language as well. So pretty simple.
Any questions for Dr. Brian? Any discussion? All in favor of motion of the new revised Traditional Tranway Year-Round schedule? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The schedules are approved. And Mr. Benardi, if you would make us a motion, we will proceed with our closed session portion.
I move the Lee County Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of discussing information that is privileged, confidential, or not in public record under NCGS Section 143, 318.11A1.
All in favor?
Aye.
The first order of business, is there a motion to approve the Human Resources Report as presented?
I make a motion that we approve the Human Resources Report as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the Human Resources Report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Secondly, is there a motion to approve a four-year contract for Bonnie Almond?
I make a motion that we approve a four-year contract for Bonnie Almond.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving that contract, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And finally, we need a motion to approve a memorandum of understanding agreement between Lee County Schools and Gary Moore on a contract-retiree basis. Is there a motion to approve that memorandum of understanding?
I move that we approve Gary Moore as a principal for Southernly.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do we need a clarification? Are we on the same page? Or did I confuse the issue?
No.
I thought you were just asking for a second on Gary Moore.
Yeah, I was. Thanks. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And with that, is there a motion for adjournment?
I motion we adjourn. Sorry. Turn the camera.
We stand adjourned.